To the Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Bellingham Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is a continuation of public hearing on the WS development. Jim, can you give us an overlay of what's been going on?
Absolutely. So WS Development is back before the board. It has been some time since this applicant has been before you. Since that time, we are now in receipt of revised plans. A peer review response has gone out, and since that time, the applicant has returned with responses to those peer reviews that are also in your package. They have made some headway with conservation, which I'm sure they can touch on briefly as well. And so this evening, after a few months of updating the plans, you do have now an updated plan set with a number of the things that the board had discussed at the last hearing addressed, and I'm sure there'll be more conversations this evening.
Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Sure. Yeah. Good evening. Austin Turner with Boulder. Thanks for having us tonight. We may have a bit of an agenda, and I don't want to take a lot of your time, but we thought, as Jim had noted, it's been a little bit since we've appeared in front of you.
Yes.
Thought we'd just give you a high-level overview of what we've been doing in the background, because we've worked pretty hard. And any general questions you might have, and obviously look forward to continuing this conversation at a subsequent.
That'd be great.
So what we have done, as Jim noted, we've responded to the peer view. It was comprehensive and thorough, as you've come to expect. We feel like we have addressed the majority, if not all, of those questions and comments that came out of there. Some of the things, as you've been talking about with the board, there's been some discussion at our last meeting about maybe some potential refining of how the existing parking lot wants to look, shopping center. We're actively working through that right now. There's obviously a number of parties who could be impacted by any of the changes that we're contemplating. So we're working on that in the background, but we have some really, really good ideas, and we feel like we're coming to a point there, if you will. And feel that the board will be pretty excited about us being able to accomplish what you asked us to take a look at. So that will be forthcoming. Just a couple pieces. We have to lock down in there, make sure everybody's in agreement, and then we'll be good to go. We're actively working with the Conservation Commission. I was just talking to Rob. Myself and Jeff and a number of us have been on a number of meetings with them and have donated more than a couple Saturday mornings to the college as well. So this coming Saturday will be out there. It's a lot of progress. Feel really good about, we have been positive discussions and productive discussions. And the plans that you have in front of you are reflective of kind of the evolution of how those conversations have been going. And we feel like we're getting, we're getting pretty close. We have, in front of the state level permitting with VIPA. We got back their initial certificate with the focus reviews. We're starting to crank through that process as well. Nothing unexpected, you know, and they've been really good to work with. So like I said, we're getting pretty close and feel pretty confident that we've narrowed the focus substantially. And pending any additional feedback that may come out of the town consultant respectfully, I think we're getting pretty close to where the issues have been addressed and feel like we're maybe getting close to, presumptively speaking, a decision where the board would be pretty comfortable with everything having been adequately.
Okay.
That way addressed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions during the process and get anything in more detail.
Before we open up to the board for questions, I'd like to offer you a suggestion. This information came in late Friday afternoon. If you could try to get information, want to, for the board to read it, and we volunteers.
No, I completely understood that. I think that's why Austin, by the way, Jeff Curley with WS. That's why Austin prefaced his remarks this evening. We understand that this is late arriving to you guys. You're just getting a chance to dive into it. BSC's got to do the same thing.
Correct.
We were perfectly, we came to feel any initial responses, any direct comments.
I appreciate it.
Completely understand where you're at. And it's been a long time since we've seen each other.
Yeah, and I completely, and so the idea and the intent was never, hey, we expect you to have thoroughly digested everything. It was more, you know, the timing of it with some of those pieces coming together.
Yes.
But we didn't want to wait and say, okay, here it is.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, just sure.
So thank you for the update. Appreciate your ongoing efforts. I look forward to your analysis of site circulation within a parking lot itself and how that can work. I don't know how. You know, there's, there's a lot of activity there on a weekend and how all of this is going to work together beyond my imagination. Putting that together, so I look forward to that analysis to get an understanding of how that might work, because I know that that's probably a concern for everybody on the board. You know, then, you know, just really, and I know we're going to go into these, all of the points in detail at another hearings, but you know, understanding the traffic impact and looking at, and I know you've spent a lot of time looking at the area around the proposed project, I think, taking sort of a holistic look, and I think there's some opportunities, whereas the applicant. You know, there's three, there are several choke, choke points of, you know, traffic impacts along this particular stretch of one twenty-six, and all of them are sort of under common ownership and hoping there's opportunities there and we'll expand, but, you know, take a look at other opportunities to make that whole stretch work. You know, what you've already done with the state. And then lastly, I know that, just from an aesthetic point of view, the rates as previous, I think other people have too, is historically, or at least in one other situation, we asked developers that were construction, that were building a warehouse on four ninety-five, for them to screen as much as they can, particularly, we don't want to, I don't, I know I don't want to, because we don't want to see a bunch of trucks lined up or a bunch of open bays, and you drive by and people drive through four ninety-five, that's their, that's what they see that way. So to the extent that you can bring that as much as possible, and that's something I'm.
Yeah, very much so. In fact, Jeff and I have been talking about that a lot in the background, and we do have managed one from four ninety-five, so we have some good ideas in there, and we're we're going to be enhancing kind of that existing vegetative buffer in there with some additional plantings where we think it's going to really kind of, where there may be some higher canopies and there put some stuff into really great vertical screens. So we are looking at strategic opportunities to enhance that, and that'll be something we're going to talk about in more detail with you at some to occasion.
I appreciate that. There is some variation in photography along four ninety-five, along that stretch, so that's what Austin's referring to again. It's not a one-size-fits-all sort of approach to it, so we've been trying to study those different sections to get to understand what the what the perspective will be from a motorist on four ninety-five and where the screening is, is best implemented to do exactly what you're describing. Just screen the doors, just screen the loading spaces.
I appreciate that. With the plans that we're delivering on Friday reflect that.
Thank you. Any other questions, Jim? Do we plan, do you plan on going over the peer review one by line?
I do, yeah. I don't know, I mean, so I might do that tonight. But I intend to go through, particularly when BSC's had an opportunity to provide for all of correspondence, to explore as much or as little of that as the board would comfortable. So I'm happy to do that, and we can go into it.
So we want to hold off on any of that.
Yeah.
I think that's what our sense was. We gave this to you very late on Friday, going into a weekend, and understand that it takes some time to digest it. We wanted to be here, feel any kind of initial feedback and give you some time to go with it and get a response back.
You said you were working on the parking lot movements. We're assuming that that's moving, who's not letting the trucks go out to one twenty-six and the movement coming back onto Hartford Avenue.
Letting trucks go back.
Good, North Main Street.
Oh, yes, yeah. The access of what we had talked about, and we're trying to strongly discourage vehicles from using that movement. It's kind of bypassing the cutthroat. So the plans that we're working on, that we've been talking about internally, I think are going to be really, really good in that regard to prohibit or really discourage that movement to get out of North Main Street.
Yeah.
And really funnel it through the main driveway.
So that would not be, that would not be included in what we're saying.
It's not reflected in there, but we have some really refined concepts we've worked on internally with Jeff, as well as with Ron, who's in one of the Hollywood Squares appear that reflects that, and we're going to be showing that to you as those kind of coalesce. We're almost there, and that'll be the next meeting we'll have.
We just, we do have the, we have various stakeholders out there that obviously have an interest in the ability to affect currently changes in the parking lot, so we're working through that. But as Austin alluded to, we have, we do have some basic understanding of the issues. We didn't think it was as much trucks as it was vehicular traffic that was the concern that the board and the board's consultant.
Workers to.
Yeah. So we've been focusing on, on trying to make that to discourage those motions. I don't think, I know trucks won't be making that, making an attempt to make their way out to North Main. I think they're going to come right out on Hartford Avenue, went onto the highway, ninety-nine percent.
We've made that very difficult, if that are possible.
I look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Sure. I used to want to touch on the North Main Street entrance as well. I think as is in front of Home Depot is, is a big problem in the winter. That driveway that runs parallel to the store, they remove the speed bumps. There's really no designated area that people are kind of crossing. There's multiple entrances. People are going to the Garden Center. People are going to the lumber section, kind of a free-for-all crossing. You kind of elaborate on what you expect personal vehicle traffic would be, kind of cutting through.
Coming off, so you're every time coming off the North Main. So if you come in there and you take a immediate left, you'd be going to proper Florida Cora's now. If you go straight, you're coming into the Garden Center side of it.
Correct. Yep.
Yep. So we're, we've taken a look at that with Ron. I know that was talked about at our last discussion too. But part of what we're looking at right now on that kind of we call the holistic plan of the center, is some potential geometric improvements to that too, to define it better and make it a little bit less, as you call it, a free-for-all. So we're looking at that right now, and then we're expecting to come back and we'll be discussing that at a future meeting.
To be clear, you're talking about vehicles that would make their way from North Main Street to the, the new distribution center across the front of Home Depot.
Correct. And then, and then have a time period when I say it is the worst is the end of March, early April, the speed bumps aren't back in yet, and it's like a rush to the Garden Center where everybody's pouring in through there.
Yeah.
You're kind of just dodging cars, crossing. So that's, that's definitely a concern.
You there?
I don't think I have anything to add. Thank you very much for the update. I appreciate it. I guess one question. I know I see that there's the response to the peer review dated March third. Is this the first round for peer review?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know that obviously it's going to take a lot of time to even just one of the you know, fine tune the project of this size. So I really appreciate you guys coming in and giving us an update. I'm happy to hear that now things are moving forward and coming to an understanding or agreement as far as the site circulation goes, I think is true. So awesome.
Yeah. I'll tell Paul.
I have a couple comments.
Sure.
The first, and we go back to the meeting we had about traffic flow within the site, first meeting. Any way we can separate truck vehicles from passenger vehicles? So we can have a separate lane for truck vehicles going to the warehouse, so they don't trespass with pedestrian.
Separate entrance off of one twenty-six, or once they get into.
Once we get into parking.
Yeah, I think that's effectively the way we've attempted to design it. They're going to get by that first intersection in front of P three Uno, and as they continue around, some of the geometric improvements that Austin's alluded to is to create some barriers to entry so that people aren't able to get into that out of ring road, and people from the ring road once they're in it, aren't able to get back into the
Okay.
The Home Depot Shopping Center. So that's, that's the.
Secondly, a lot of people did not realize this. How long have you been doing this?
We developed Staubert in the early nineties, nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two.
Any endeavor, anything else?
Charles River Center and Crossroads.
I would think you may want to, that people have not seen you in a while. You may want to reintroduce yourself to the public at some point. You're not a stranger here. I think, you know, you need to let people know that. That was my comment. I think that will.
Open to feedback on how this is to do that, but I. Yeah, I think we've, we've had, had stayed in touch with Jim and, and manager frame throughout the one twenty-six quarter project. That's been obviously a, a project that's been a while and coming together. We're excited that we have a potential solution here to get a lot of the improvements that are necessary to the one twenty-six quarter made as part of this. So I like to think we stay in touch with those folks.
I think the public, we'd be next year on the public.
What do we think about a public dunk tank?
You've been a long-term unit. You're not, you're not just new here. Yeah.
No, I was thinking we could sell tickets to a public dunk tank.
I'm sorry?
Public dunk tank? Like a dunk tank, I'll sell tickets to them.
I don't want to be that far. Right forth we can. That's all I have. I'll link up with the public if they have any comments. Jim?
Doesn't appear like, if there's anyone online that has public comment, but now if you do, welcome to unmute.
I don't see any hands.
I don't see any. Nope.
Then what I would like to do is ask your motion to continue this to May eleventh. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the continuance to May second? Please think about that thing.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
Aye.
Aye.
When that passes unanimously.
That was May one-one.
May one-one. Did I say something wrong?
I heard second in there, I thought.
The second, I'm sorry.
Heard it. Okay, thank you. I'm just making sure I pay attention.
No, I wasn't. My mistake.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fine, yeah, I don't, never know.
The next meeting is Bellingham Shores Inclusionary Housing Special Permit Modification to the existing major residential complex special permit. This is a new public hearing. Would you mind reading, would you mind reading the public hearing notice?
Absolutely. In accordance with the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaws, Article twenty-five inclusionary housing, Section two forty-eight eighty-eight affordable component, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three seventeen in the Arkham Meeting Room in the municipal center, as well as utilizing the virtual meeting option found on the Town of Bellingham's website, bellinghamma.org. The general public may participate in the Arkham Meeting Room in the municipal center, as well as utilize the virtual meeting option found on the Town of Bellingham's website, bellinghamma.org. The applicant and owner Chad Gordman and Logan Huffman propose to construct sixteen deed-restricted affordable units due to Section C, Condition Eight of the Bellingham Shores Major Residential Development Special Permit and area of land consisting of one hundred and sixty-four point zero five acres located at Center Street between Cross Street and South Main Street, map seventy-two block sports means in suburban residential and agricultural zone. The plans were prepared by Turning Point Engineering, Field Block seven fifty-seven, Button, Massachusetts, zero one five nine zero. The applications and plans may be viewed at the Planning and Zoning Office or the Town Clerk's Office in the Municipal Center at Ten Mechanic Street in Bellingham, Massachusetts, during regular Municipal Center Business Hour by William F. O'Connell, Jr., Chairman, Bellingham Planning.
Thank you very much. I would any opinion, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion's open. I'm going to approve. Jim, can you give us an overview?
Absolutely. So this evening, we have our applicants here before us with the original Bellingham Shores Major Residential Complex Special Permit as part of the major residential bylaw, inclusionary housing is required by the town, and the request by the applicant is to conform with the bylaw that has that is on, on record and the permit that is, was previously approved. These will be onsite. So if you may recall, for those who were on the board at the time, there was a discussion with the, the previous owner of the property that he may seek off-site inclusionary housing, and that's why it wasn't, they didn't seek the inclusionary housing special permit at that time. Coming back with the new property owner, it was determined that it will be onsite. And so that is what is before you this evening, as well as a modification to the existing special permit to modify the roadway as it, as it comes to Cross Street, and I'm sure the applicant can explain in detail that modification. But ultimately, it is in an effort to provides a better meeting location with the new way and Cross Street, so not to impact abutting properties, as well as some other benefits. So those are the two items before you this evening.
And these will require two separate motion.
Yes, please.
Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Chad Gordman represents Eastland Partners. We have Steve O'Connell.
You're very transparent. Even.
Without Turning Point Engineering, of course, I have also present here tonight Clay Williams. He'll be answering any questions on the inclusionary housing submission, if there is any time. And just like, uh, say hello to everybody. The construction site's actually going quite well. You probably drive by. You can see a lot of activity.
Great things you have.
Yeah, good, good, great. Actually, we're here, we're actually, it's funny, we're here looking for this special permit, and I actually have one probably three quarters built already. So we're looking forward to offering these particular homes out to the residents of Bellingham and looking forward to getting some, you know, families into affordable and a beautiful new development as well. So.
One second, just want to ask Jim to clarify some of the questions. Jim, can you describe inclusionary housing?
Yeah, absolutely. So.
You should. It's not a question.
Sure. So inclusionary housing is, is deed-restricted affordable housing. So the Town of Bellingham's zoning bylaw requires that a certain percentage of the development is deed-restricted in perpetuity as affordable. Affordable is, is relative, I guess you could say. We in Bellingham are captured in the Boston Cambridge area for price, prices established and incomes established. I'm sure the applicant could, could cite the, the exact income requirements, but they are increasing significantly each and every year. So right now, I believe a family of four can't have an income greater than, it may, maybe, it may be north of a hundred thousand at this point. It's, it's quite, quite amazing. And these, the prices of the homes will reflect a similar income. So I, I don't know what the price points the applicant is seeking. I'm sure they could get into that a little bit. But they will be, you know, north of two hundred thousand, certainly. So that, it's a requirement so that we can offer housing options to all, all of our, our residents, or provide those options. And it is also a requirement through the state that, that Bellingham achieved ten percent affordable housing. Bellingham is now above our ten percent, and this inclusionary housing bylaw helps us maintain our ten percent. So we are above our ten percent slightly. And with these new developments coming online, you know, there's a good percentage of these as market rate, which, you know, goes out to the market and gets whatever price that, that can be achieved. And then a, a small portion of these stay as affordable to keep us above our ten percent.
Thank you very much. I think that.
So.
Exactly, absolutely.
Apologize.
Nope, nope, not all. Yeah, if we'd like to start on the, on the first thing. Turn it right over to Clay.
Absolutely. So again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Clay Williams of Eastland Partners. I put together this submission package, basically checking out all the things you as a board are looking forward to issue an inclusionary housing special permit. So per the decision of the major residential development, we have five percent of our affordable units at fifty percent AMI, which would be low income, five percent at eighty percent AMI, which is median income, and another five percent at up to a hundred and twenty percent. So we have three different income levels, which then would incur three different sale prices for these homes. The third or fourth section of this package, page nineteen and twenty, lays out those prices for the homes at those income levels. They are subject to some change, and interest rates are jumping all over the place. These prices are fixed by the state. So basically, DHCD, the Department of Housing Community Development, is telling us what the sale prices of this house would be. We've included a lot of the affordable home lottery information, switching how the prospective buyers of the affordable units would get chosen. So we have enlisted SEB Housing as our lottery consultant, and they basically handle the sale of all our orbitals. We've used them with other projects we've done, or really trust them to do a great job. There's a lot of information in here. Most of it is kind of just our draft marketing materials. Once we can get feedback from you all on your board, we can go forward and submit to the state under their LAU program and get final certification, get ready to sell these houses to low and moderate income families in Bellingham. So I guess if you have any specific questions about the information, we could start there.
Can you talk a little bit about the timing?
Sure. So we actually made a small change to the phasing and where the affordable units are distributed. They are relatively evenly distributed throughout the project. As Chad said, I think we have two under construction right now, and one of them is substantially completed. So they're kind of mixed throughout the development. They'll be indistinguishable from the outside, so you won't be able to tell, you know, affordable versus market. They basically look the exact same. You know, and they'll be sold. I think we'll have either two or three lotteries. So people that qualify will get a pre-approval letter from a mortgage company, apply to this lottery, and there's a big advertising period where it's posted in like local newspapers and online and things like that. If your lottery ticket is pulled, you get a chance to buy one of those houses, and then obviously, as construction progresses, that process will continue.
You just tell me a little bit about the phasing, like the numbers.
Sure. So.
I don't know if other people have. I don't think we all have.
Okay.
I can't give you a copy of the packet. I can give you a phasing plan. The affordable units are denoted by the letter A. And they're fairly evenly dispersed throughout the development. One comment, one comment we got from Jim, that he was prepared enough to see the affordables in the final phase. And then just regarding phasing, relatively quickly, working from left to right. And then the legend indicates, you know, phase one, phase two, the blue is phase three. This gold is phase four. Five, six and seven. And, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So initially, there were four affordables in phase seven. We've made some adjustments, and now there are just two. It's hard to comply completely with your request, Jim, and then still be able to kind of evenly disperse. But I hope that the quality of work and workmanship you've seen on the project so far give you the confidence that they'll definitely be built. I mean, I may have had experiences with those are the last units that get built and people walk away. It's and to demonstrate that. Units are already being constructed, affordable units are already being constructed because they're building in segments. They're building as they go, not popping around based on buyer's requests. So the letter A indicates the, which lots are designated. There's no, none in four. Yeah, so four is this tan, smallest tan phase. So initially. So initially. When we were working on this revision, you know, lot thirty-six was part of phase four. But because building this road, Lilac Avenue, Iris Lane and then Lilac Avenue is gonna get us out to Cross Street. Uh, those lots have frontage on the road that's gonna be built, so the. The building of the houses got moved, so why the fault, the affordable unit, got moved. It's it's actually gonna be built earlier. In the phase than if it if it was in the tan fourth phase.
Yeah, we're obviously advancing pretty quickly out there, so we'll be back in front of you. Uh, about June or July, actually, for the entire road going right up to Cross Street.
Yeah, for lot releases.
And even in that last phase, which is the the dark pink, I think there's what, what at least ten lots or so where two are affordable. And of course, Tim Arcarti, if if I went uh helter-skelter on anybody, he could hold any might uh permits for. Uh, you know. For the affordables, depending to what I was supposed to do. Oh, just Jim, are you satisfied with the spread?
Yeah, with the the modification, I talked to the building commissioner. He's satisfied. Um, I'd say practically speaking, as as the applicant mentioned. We were just concerned that if it was backloaded, uh, we would have, you know, several affordables remaining and no more market rate. Uh, but um with this modification and and with uh discussing with the building commissioner, I think I think we're in good and a good position.
I would just say, I think with this company. The concern we had before the sale. Has been lessened greatly.
When I take it, this is the first time I've seen this, but I'm seeing four corner lots, more or less on the on the road. Yeah, thirty-nine, thirty-six, eleven or one hundred and eighty-one. Are those smaller lots or eleven or fourteen's not half, but it's. The percentage on corner lots.
The lot sizes really haven't changed from the original approval by the previous developer. Um, the only lot changes that have been made are uh we lot. Number thirty-nine here on the end as a result of the modification to. Realign Lilac Avenue with the section of Cross Street. So this lot got slightly smaller as a result of that and a lot of Cross Street got slightly bigger and you can imagine with that realignment. But all the other lots, configuration sizes.
Those corner lots will will be able to have garages and all of the.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, the corner lots actually give some flexibility on which street.
Yeah, when you drive like that. During the last uh time I was here, I think we're noting section eighteen, I think with the special permit where I think we submitted seven different styles. Um, they're mixed styles, so whatever I submitted in there, the affordables are certain of those styles, so they're indistinguishable as well.
Don't you step before you remind the public. When you drive through. On the outside, you will not be able to tell. On the inside, it may have not out the whistle of the bell.
Right, well said.
But on the outside, you can't tell.
Absolutely.
Out of those seven styles, I'd expect to see at least one of each.
Yeah, yes, yeah, correct. Also statutory.
Uh, I just wanna touch on the appearance. They're they're all gonna look the same, but is there? Any difference in the quality of work and? One, how it's getting a higher quality siding or roofing or anything like that?
The the exteriors are all the same. If part of what I submitted was the spec sheet, you know, interior finishes. It's things like, you know, laminate flooring instead of hardwood, you know, slightly lower um maybe white appliances instead of stainless. That's the real difference. The outside of the house is exactly the same, windows.
You know, a lot of people might like uh an upgrade, which we charge upgrades to all market rates. They might want hardwood in their great room. I mean, these will be furnished with, you know, carpet, of course.
Right. Thank you.
I think I'm good. I had just a question about the payment.
I might have questions about the realignment of.
I I have one question. With the affordable housing. Are they allowed to come in and ask for up there?
Oh, ask for upgrade, yeah, apparently. Uh, that's a sketchy one. I usually do certain selections of some of these units. Usually it's a color selection.
Okay.
So it's not like, you know, I try to give them, well, this is what you get. You know, if you were to come in here, you could say, hey, I have tan, I have uh. Black, I have this and that. Yeah, just on, yeah, just on the inside, that's right.
It gets tricky if a homeowner, let's say after they buy and close and live in the house and they out of their own pocket. Upgrade to wood floors and granite countertops, et cetera. They cannot sell the house for anymore, so that that restriction indeed is in perpetuity.
That's right.
Yeah, they don't get that.
Right, that's what I'm getting.
That's correct, yeah. We try to limit that. Some other forty P's have. Done uh some small upgrades offered before um. But I don't I don't like that, you know, picking stuff and then they don't qualify for the thing. So we 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 kind of. Uh, uh, pick a nice product and then we have them, you know, the the luxury of picking uh a pick three different styles of this tile or color. Just to customize the make of their own. And that's something I chose, of course.
Do any other questions? I'm gonna pay the motion. To approve um. The inclusionary housing is presented to us.
We're gonna handle the other things.
Separate, two separate.
Okay, yeah, alright, so move.
Now a second.
Second.
Your motion of applause may be made in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye, aye.
Thank you very much, Mark. One last thing, uh, you have another item in progress. Can you explain that, please?
Yep, I'm happy to do that. Uh, again, Steve will call up and turn it point in the hearing. So the crux of the modification request was a result of an email um that I had received from the DPW director. And it may have even. Come down from higher, but he was the messenger. And what is important. Understand is a relatively simple. The modification is. So. Lilac Avenue used to come out to Cross Street without this little bit of a switchback. But when it did. It lined itself right across the street from the existing house here at at Lilac uh Cross Street. So I wanna do. Is find that. So the plan shows a little bit of the corner of the house. And what we're able to do, apparently there's been a history of of vehicles running. The stop sign accidentally, the top of Cross Street with the intersection of Center Street. The results of the car goes right into the yard of the house opposite the intersection and. Some have even maybe even hit the house or, you know, landscaping, hardscaping. So the request came to our office if we could realign uh this section of Lilac Avenue. We're hoping we would take a look, do as much as we can, this utility poles out there. Fortunately, we were able to to do this at the satisfaction. Of the DPW director. And uh what's important from an alignment standpoint is that if you're a vehicle exiting Lilac Avenue. If you were to drive straight across, you know. You know, unless you really jerked your wheel, you wouldn't hit the house. It might be other situation in town where you came straight across, ran the stop sign. You were very, you know, most likely gonna hit the house, so. Um, DPW director was satisfied with this modification. Again, the result is a reconfiguration. Of of this lot. And the lot across the street, so thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-nine got slightly smaller than I indicated. This used to come out. You know, this way. It was, this was essentially straight. And this was straight. And now we're shifted over about a lane and a half. So as a result of that modification. There's a profile sheet that can illustrate that. The uh the profile and the grading is still gonna work with existing grades. Um, an unintended consequence and and I'm sorry, unintended uh benefit is that we actually got further from the wetland. So um, that's again, a positive thing. And really, that was really the crux of the modification is that that the request of DPW were able to realign that section. Um, in return. We had requested from BPW. You may recall. There in permitting, the original applicant, that there was a long run of sewer. From Clover Drive, which is the pink. Phase that has the eighteen D fiber rock the easement that runs through it. With a long run of sewer that was supposed to be constructed from Clover Drive. Up to the edge of Center Street and that sewer was provisional. If someday Gale Drive were to ever get sewer. They would be able to connect into this. Proposed sewer system and have the benefit of sewer. In order to accomplish that, the depth of the sewer here at Center Street was over twenty-two feet deep. And then it was very, you can see the land goes up as you as you go from Clover Drive, Center Street, the topography rises. So the sewer will not rise as much as the topography. So, you know, where the sewer would be about here, the ground's about there, over twenty-two feet. And that's a long stretch of twenty-two feet. So what the compromise was. Was that sewer would be constructed to the rear of the backyard of the adjacent houses. With a stub that was available for future extension, should sewer and Gale Drive ever be obtained. This way, this the easement is still there. Um, but DPW would have the ability or private developer, whoever was involved with the sewer for Gale Drive would have the ability to connect to the sewer. In a manner that would be appropriate at that time. Without disrupting property, you know, properties of these two houses, lot forty-three and forty-four, so. Over a hundred feet of sewer would be constructed to the rear of those houses. Uh, DPW was satisfied with that. That was another component of the modification. And there is a third uh bullet item request. We incorporate in this modification. Normally you might see something like this. On an A and R plan presented to the to the board. Uh, but because of the timing worked out as such. Uh, requests from respective buyers and I believe now uh buyers who have lots under agreement, lot seven, eight. Eighty-five and eighty-six. So seven and eight are near uh near the entrance, seven and eight. Before the intersection of Lilac and Iris Lane. And then eighty-five and eighty-six are a little bit further in on Iris Lane. Configurations of the lot with the house that they wanted to select, that was an option and some religious beliefs. Went into the decision of of. Reconfigure, reconfiguring the lot. And we just use, because of the timing of of being able to submit the modification. We tacked it on. So, simple lot reconfiguration on four lots. No, no less frontage, um, no less area. Just reconfiguration of, you know, those two lots and, you know, kind of the lots next to it, just to make sure. Um, shapes that were. Saw and requested were to be achieved.
Is it still blended?
Yeah, definitely. Probably a little bit better.
Yeah.
No more triangle. There was some triangular lots.
It was a tri- triangle. It's not good luck.
Okay. I'm sure one of us will.
So uh, you know, DPW is fine with things generally, we're fine with things. Uh, but I'm, Jim, I'm curious. The um. The town would be giving up four hundred feet of, sounds like pretty significant trenching and work done. Um, what, what do you, how do you feel about that?
Alright, so yeah, Don DiMartino reviewed the the sewer um uh modification. And he was, he he relayed back to me that he was satisfied with the the layout and and how it would. Uh, how the modification is proposed. It would work uh sufficient for what's the, what is being asked.
Yeah, and then is the uh butter that took from the, you know, the butter across the street and. Then you've adjusted the route, they're fine with. We actually never had direct contact with the butter. Everything had come through the town manager's office and then via. To us from DPW director. Uh, but my understanding is that messages were conveyed in reverse and they were made aware. Um, through the planning department, you know, specifically Amy, like they had come in to inquire. Amy informed me that they were. I think thrilled might have been the word she used, because I don't think they knew this was happening. They made a couple of requests and then they happened to come in and Amy says, well, it's actually here on the plan. So yes, that's my understanding. No direct contact.
You being um on a line now from directly. Amy at the house at night, that helps them a lot with the headlights of cars that you can drive in and say.
That 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 one lane.
They're gonna be coming back for a request for a fence or something to top, you know, some of that.
Yeah. Initially, to address the concern, we had considered a landscape firm, some boulders that could block a car. But when we looked at the realignment, um, it actually worked out.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm also no question.
I think you mentioned lot thirty-nine did not, not get smaller.
Lot thirty-nine does get a little bit smaller um because of the road shift goes, you know, directly.
It's shifting, right?
Yeah.
How much smaller?
Um, I think about twenty-five hundred square feet. So it went from about seventeen changed to fifteen-five. So maybe a little under eighteen thousand to fifteen thousand five hundred.
So the reason I ask, have the, have the price points been determined? For each affordable unit lot and does making that smaller, is there a reason for this price point to change for that?
No, and Clay can talk a little bit about the price. There is damage by the state.
Right.
Yeah.
Lot size will not affect price.
Right.
Lot, there's no lot premiums or anything like that.
Yeah, since it's a lottery, you basically apply, okay, I meet this income level. And if you get chosen, you know, then um. From my understanding, I'm talking with the um lottery agent. They'll be pre-specified. That way there's a certain number of each um house at each unit or each income level. Excuse me, and then, you know, you need to choose that.
Thank you. One more question. When they draw the lottery, what is timeframe before the client has to. Come up with the money for the actual lottery once that paper's drawn?
So you have to submit a mortgage preapproval or to get a lottery ticket. So like one thing before you even sign up, you know, you gotta have something from a bank that says, I'm approved to buy this, you know, two hundred eighty-six thousand bucks.
Thank you.
Do you believe you'll have any problems? Going along?
I doubt it. I think with the housing crisis and the way prices are these days, you know, I don't, I don't think.
Quite honestly, nobody's really building four bedroom.
Right.
Houses really on the affordables, but honestly, so they actually, the state was shocked that I was actually doing it, so. Uh, it's a rarity these days.
Representative in DHCD said less than five percent of all single family affordable housings have been four livings. Most, most builders, because of the the marginal difference. Built three bedrooms, but these will be four.
There's a public, any comments? I see people in the back.
Um, my comment is already regarding the traffic impact on Cross Street and this ship may have already sailed. I met a, missed a meeting where where that was addressed. Um, one meeting that we were at was. I remember the mention of a traffic report that said that traffic impact on Cross Street would be negligible. Um, which I found to be. Highly unlikely. Um. Can you give me any updates or? Or any, any of what you're understanding would be of the impact of traffic on Cross Street?
Uh, Jim. Do you refer to uh informate specific meetings?
I I'm I'm happy to, yeah, discuss uh briefly a traffic. So uh, this project, yeah, Bellingham shores. As as you mentioned, um, may maybe, uh, we had this, uh, we've had this discussion um. Quite some time ago, unfortunately, uh, Bellingham. quite some time ago, unfortunately, uh Bellingham Shores was approved, I believe in twenty nineteen originally. Um and um at that time, maybe it was a little later, later than that, sorry, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one gets a little cloudy. Um but uh yes, we've had discussions of traffic impacts and and I, yes, I do recall uh the the discussion of negligible impact on Cross Street. And this board did question that uh quite a bit. Uh there is um um modifications to uh South Main Street and Center Street that are occurring. I thought, I think the intent of um of of Cross Street though was not to make it that of a center or a south main street, but to leave more of the rural character of that that area. Um and the thought was that a large percentage of these folks will be using um South Main Street as their access to um, you know, to jobs and school. Um but yes, there will be some impact to Cross Street um by this development. Um you know, that's that's certainly true.
You know, I don't know if it was an outcome of the discussion regarding traffic on Cross Street, but the sidewalk was on the approved plans will be constructed.
Right, yes. Thank you. Yes, that sidewalk and donated open space. Um again, not direct mitigation to traffic, but uh something that would benefit the the community.
Is it possible to look?
I'm sorry.
Uh can can we look into the possibility of getting speed and limit signs posted on Cross Street? Currently there are none. Um I know this may not be the right.
As we go through this project, we can probably discuss that some point in time. Either through the town or other avenues. You just had the owner say, you'll install speed.
It's not, the problem being, again, this is not, not your problem, but um I don't know what the speed, I live on Canal Drive, right up the cross street. I I don't know what the speed limit is. I'm assuming it's thirty-five, but I don't know.
Forty-five was there yesterday.
Is it?
We ran out, yeah, it's forty-five.
Which is way too fast.
Forty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had our mailbox taken actually months ago.
Yeah, I think it's in the jurisdiction of the police department, we'll circulate, we'll circle with Don at the BPW and I could put it up sooner than later. I don't have an issue with that.
You will put those up?
At that, at that direction.
Discuss with the safety officer, the DPW. As timely as we can inspect those sites. I would also suggest that you may want to approach, we now have, Jim, is there one or two safety officers in town?
Uh we have one main safety officer in town, um and we.
He's an assistant.
Yeah, yeah.
So you you may want to call the police department, talk to uh the safety officer about the um speed limit. And that's the best I can offer to say.
Not a thing.
Uh we're sorry, you missed the previous meeting.
Yeah, no.
But you, we are trying to um prevent that from being a statewide catch. And that's probably to begin, do not look at why or anything of that nature. I think over time, as Jim said, people will navigate to um South Main Street. So I'm gonna need three motions.
Hey, Bill. Chair.
Uh let me, excuse me, second motion on changes for
Mister Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you, the other one, the other one doesn't get paid, I keep forgetting.
You're brutal.
Why are you laughing? Are you, are you gonna talk, are you gonna talk here?
Oh, maybe, yeah, probably.
Yeah.
For the sewer, I agree, twenty-two, that's just not feasible. But are you going to keep the easement in place?
Yes.
Alright, so it's gonna be stub, but the easement's gonna remain that way.
Important aspect is this, so, yep, and these dash lines. The easement.
Okay, perfect.
When we sold the house, whoever was living there, in case they put a pool or something, the sewer would be farther enough away where they can take it, take it and run.
Absolutely. I know we just had a townhouse development in Bellingham where they had the gravity, uh not gravity, forced-made sewer, which I imagine if Gale Drive,
Yeah.
if they were to connect, I imagine they would do something extremely similar.
That was our position, yeah, that was our position, man. There's a lot of history there, unfortunately, I don't have the benefit of, and I got uh the high-level story from BPW. But we spent a little, spent a little bit of time looking at the possibility of sewer on Gale Drive because it actually goes down low point and then it comes up and getting through that low point for the gravity sewer required the depth.
Yeah, twenty-two feet is just like.
Seems like uh force mainly be one more realistic option in the future for them and, and they're very reliable these days.
Absolutely. Alright, that's all. We'll be silent now.
Now, I already did team the motion, confirming the changes uh this Bellingham Shore for um the entrance and exits on Millian Circle.
Is it Lilac Avenue?
Excuse me?
Is it Lilac Avenue?
I thought it was um.
It's Lilac Avenue.
Thank you. Number second?
Second.
All right.
Bye.
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 Motion passes announced. I'm gonna need a second motion to amend the lot changes specified this evening with regards to lots of. And can you guys tell me what those lots are again?
Seven, eight, eighty-five and eighty-six.
Number second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mister Chairman. Oh, real quick, uh with that, uh if you could amend that motion, if if you agree to uh also endorse uh a a subsequent plan uh for recording. Uh cause uh the applicant will need to provide you with a revised plan laying out the lot lines uh for signature.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Sorry. No, there's no any motion included? I guess second will be amended.
Bye.
Bye.
Alright, alright.
Bye.
That motion amended passes. So we have a vote. Yeah, I'm gonna thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I think one question about, how many um, how many?
Uh right now, we're uh fifteen, fifteen are under construction and we anticipate between three and four a month. So by December, I'll be coming back here in July and bonding the entire road going out across street.
Has it been um you have a lot of interest?
Yeah, 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 even with the rising rates, quite honestly, yeah.
How many subcontractors you have down there?
Quite a few. I gotta get more too.
I gotta get more. Yeah.
One last question, do you have any difficulty with um varying the color inside and the shape and people not wanting to necessarily?
Uh there hasn't been too, too much pushback, but I I try not to do two houses of the same color in a row, so I strategically plan, we plan in advance. Uh you may want the style, I picked the style in the front, but I said, you know, you can have it in white or gray. And then the next one might be tan and off-white, so there's nothing, I'm trying to keep a scheme going in the neighborhood, yeah. Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Hey Jim, I have green cards, I'll leave these to Amy somewhere.
Uh yes, yeah, you could leave them there. Uh I'll let Amy know that they're there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Can you give us a review on the MBTA project that's going on in here?
Yeah, absolutely. So I I believe we we touched on this briefly some time ago, but I'm happy to go over it. So this is the new legislation that was passed uh before the, uh at the stage. So it it modifies chapter forty A, section three A, or they added three A. Uh and forty A is your zoning uh um the zoning act. And so we refer back to forty A when we talk about special permits, we talk about variances. Uh we talk about the Dover Amendment, all of these are captured in forty A. They've added forty A, three A, which talks about MBTA communities and Bellingham is uh one of those. Uh Bellingham is defined as uh MBTA adjacent community, meaning uh Franklin has Forge Park and we're adjacent to Franklin. And and so we are captured within this. We also are an MBTA community in general, we pay fees, MBTA, and we have the the ride share and and technically a um a shuttle that that goes through town. Um so with that, an MBTA, MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or or bylaw that provides at least at least one district of reasonable size, and I'll define that in a minute, uh in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, so no special permits, uh no strict conditions, it's as of right. Uh provided however, that such multifamily housing shall be without age restriction and shall be suitable for families with children. Uh and they haven't defined that, but the assumption is that they have to have uh multiple uh options for multiple bedrooms. Uh for the purposes of the section, a district of reasonable size shall mean have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre uh subject to and uh the environmental uh code established in in uh chapter one thirteen. Uh and located not more than point five miles from a commuter rail station if applicable. Uh that last line doesn't apply to Bellingham anymore, that that was since modified uh so that adjacent communities now don't have to have strict compliance with point five miles because we don't have a commuter rail point five miles away. Uh so we uh at Bellingham can place a reasonable-sized district, any location uh in town that is, that makes sense for our community. Um and so uh next steps here is that the state is requiring that by the end of twenty twenty-four, that all communities come into compliance with this. Uh Bellingham is set uh has sent in their their um proposed action plans, which kind of is a placeholder and says that, yes, we're working on it, we don't comply now, but we we will comply within uh that timeframe. Um and uh Bellingham is, as I mentioned, an adjacent community, which means that that fifteen units per acre must sit in a reasonable size and that reasonable size uh district is defined as fifty acres. So if you do the math, fifty acres, fifteen units per acre, Bellingham has to come up with a location or location that could potentially develop up to seven hundred and fifty units of housing uh in town. Um that can come in many different forms, you know, we could do it a by right district, we could do an overlay district. Um and so that's, that's the thought uh is to uh think up a number of different ideas, have a public process, that public process, we're proposing that process start maybe uh in early January of next year, uh laying out essentially a year uh long path to uh fall town meeting of twenty twenty-four, uh where a zoning ordinance is to be passed in, to be in compliance. Um so again, I I I mentioned reasonable-sized district or districts. You could do it in multiple locations, it's kind of ease the burden some. Uh you could think strategically in terms of uh locations and properties that maybe could, are underdeveloped and could utilize this to better develop their their properties. There's a number of ways you can do it and and I think it's, it's a good approach that Bellingham is taking is kind of, uh let's sit back, let's let some communities go forward first. Let's see how it it works and uh and then get get rolling here in January. Uh there is at least one community that said, no, thank you. Um and I'll be eager to see what the state comes down on uh as the the result of saying no to it. Right now, the regulations state that you're not eligible for certain state grants, which Bellingham actually utilizes quite a bit, things like Mass Works, uh potentially housing choice, a number of other ones uh that are out of the one-stop um at at the state level. Um so that's it in a nutshell. Uh happy to answer any question.
I understand committees being informed for this.
Right, so yeah, so committee to be informed, I know the uh select board had reached out to to see interested individuals. Uh but again, that committee likely won't really get started in earnest until uh January.
With the volume of housing, will these plans come before the planning board? Do we even say?
Uh well, very likely, it depends on how the the ordinance is or the bylaws written. Um but in Bellingham, a by right development still has to get a development plan. Um so if that is how it is written, yeah, they would come to the planning board for review, as like site plan review essentially.
So I assume that some calls above properties?
Many calls from everybody thinking that we could toss seven hundred and fifty units on there, you know, post this size uh lot. Uh and understandably so that they they would like to take part in it. And I think that's why, uh you know, it's talking with Dennis and others of the select board is uh making a public process is probably the, in the best interest so that we can lay out uh and and do and review each property and and see which one makes sense for our community.
As this goes forward, I assume the fire department will be brought in based on the height of some of these buildings? Make sure we have apparatus and they can get there?
Oh yeah, absolutely, a fire department, police department, I mean, some of the, uh you know, to get this kind of density, there will have to be apartments um uh constructed there, you won't be able to do, you know, it's a single family with this type of density. Um so, you know, no, understanding the the ramifications of that, I mean, there are, there are many positives to that, but there also are some drawbacks and some expenses um that come with that and that certainly our emergency response uh team will be uh taxed heavier than than what they have in the past.
Thank you. Anyone else have any question?
Yes, Jim, is it unrestricted on the housing?
Unrestricted. Yeah, so now, uh so we, uh there was discussions about the inclusionary, kind of like what we just discussed here. So you can put inclusionary housing in uh in your bylaw, but it can't be by special permit, essentially, I believe is where they came down. So we can, we can keep that ten percent uh inclusionary, which uh you know, we'll have to the bet that further, but it might be recommended in order to keep us above our ten percent, because if we put seven hundred and fifty market rate units on there, we're gonna be back down to six percent or something like that, so. Uh you know, those are things we'll have to consider, but yeah, no other stipulations, we can't uh you know, the, if there won't be special permit criteria where we're putting all kinds of strict conditions on there.
So fifteen units per acre in the density, did, is there any requirement for the bedrooms per unit?
Uh no, but they do slide in there of it must be uh available for families uh and and children, I believe that's how it's phrased.
Of course they do.
Yeah, so very likely, um you're gonna be expected to allow for twos and threes. Um you know, the policy at DHCD for things like forty Bs is uh ten percent of the units need to be three-bedroom. Uh so there, I'm imagining that's likely gonna be one of those things that they're, they're looking at at the state level to make sure that we're not limiting it to uh you know, just studios, ones and and maybe some twos.
Gotcha. And so, and you said that it doesn't have to be fifty acres of, or fifty contiguous acres, you can divide it up in different overlays essentially, not overlays, but it's actually gonna be its own.
Yeah, it's, it's ultimately what the committee ends up with in town meeting of uh dops, but it could be an overlay. Could be an overlay that's in multiple locations, it could be its own district that's just by rights, uh depending on how we structure it. Uh so yeah, it could be at several locations, there is in the regulations what counts in the district and what doesn't for the acreage that is, so like wetlands don't count. Uh roads don't, the roadways don't count, those types of things. Um they, they got ahead of us on that.
Yeah, I I got you. And then I guess lastly, so I know you said it can't be through special permit, it has to be allowed by right, which means that the only thing that the planning board can really use is. can really use is the development plan review, which can you remind me, is there any, there any language in our bylaws regarding conditions of or? I guess not conditions of approval, but criteria for approval?
Yeah. So there is, there is a section in our bylaw for development plan review, but it's not like criteria like you see in a special permit where it's neighbor character and some of that. It's it's more matter of fact for a development plan, you must provide A through Z. And it's more almost, almost, not quite, but almost more of a box check where you provided that, you provided that, you know, things like stormwater management reports, you got to provide a traffic analysis, you have to provide a photometric plan, that kind of stuff where it's as long as you're in compliance, you know, it's it's not, it's not really a discretionary permit.
Okay, gotcha.
Dennis?
By the way, thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Chair.
I expected it. Jimmy, what is the purpose of this?
Good question, Dennis. So the purpose of this, the original intent of this was to create housing near commuter commuter rail stations. So the the intent was create more housing that's needed through the state while minimizing traffic impacts and also potentially supporting our rail system. I think the intent got a little skewed over the over the development of the law and and capturing adjacent communities and rural adjacent communities, I think maybe took it a step too far because we don't have any commuter rail stations. I mean, honestly, the closest transit we really have is when sockets bus system that that bumps up right against us, kind of near down near you, Dennis, and, you know, and then, yeah, Forge Park, but no one's walking to Forge Park really from Bellingham.
One more. What was on the committee that developed this?
That developed the law?
They come up with the idea, this whole idea, move everybody to the suburbs of a train station.
So, yeah, well, it was at the state level. There was absolutely a committee. There was groups from planning. There was groups from legal forces that that all kind of pitched this. But yeah, ultimately, it was state legislature that that moved it forward. So our House and our Senate. But yeah, there was definitely, you know, folks pushing it along the way, I'm sure. But but also, you know, the city and the surrounding area, they have to adhere to this too. And those and their numbers are are higher than ours. But and it it spreads all the way actually to Bourne. Bourne has to adhere to this as well.
Okay, so no one's excluded.
Well, there are a lot of exclusions. Anybody that's not directly adjacent to a commuter rail station doesn't have to participate. So, you know, Blackstone, it doesn't have to participate.
Thank you. Nice seeing you.
Same.
So I would imagine, given what is out in Bellingham, there's, I would imagine that there's only like a finite kind of project that can go anywhere in town, right? Like, we'll probably have a sense that it's going to be, like you said, apartments of a certain size and a certain whatever, right? Based on the requirements of the law, like it has to be a certain?
Yeah, I mean, certain style, because you're fitting fifteen. So the the whatever the the bylaw ends up being, the minimum threshold, you're going to have to put in there for your bulk regulations is fifteen units per acre. I doubt we would want to enhance that. I think very likely Bellingham is going to say, okay, we'll stick with that minimum. So achieving fifteen units per acre is at least more than double what Campanelli is doing over at the Curtis Apartments for density wise. So, so yeah, so it's very likely, you know, you, I'm sure you could offer up when creating the bylaw that you could create town homes and and other styles that so they don't have to go up to that fifteen per acre and maybe do a mix of housing types. But but potentially, yeah, it could be apart, just apartments. And I will say, I mean, Bellingham is certainly not built out. There are a lot of areas in which developers could seek this. And if the town chooses, I think, you know, ultimately, we're going to try and look for districts that would create the least impact to our community.
Any other questions? Jim, where, where are some of those districts?
Right, right now?
My backyard?
Yeah.
No, but seriously, where are we? Where are we?
Where, where are we thinking?
Fifteen acres or where is there an acre that we, I mean, one acre for fifteen? That's just about anywhere, right?
Yeah, exactly. You could, I mean, it's going to ultimately be up to the committee, the or well, ultimately town meeting to decide whether where those districts are going to go. But yes, you're right, Phil. I mean, there are numerous locations. You could put a a part of a district, you know, in anywhere, quite a bit of locations in town. That's why I think we really need to think strategically. And and that's why I, when we drafted that action plan, we laid out a full year to do it because everyone's going to come out the woodworks and and try and get to be within the district. But I I think we, there's only a handful of locations, at least in my mind, that truly makes sense, that would limit limit impacts in in Bellingham, if we put in that that type of development.
There are any issues that while we're developing our plan, that somebody comes in and tries to get in ahead of time and freeze their zoning or something?
No, because we're not taking anything away. We would be giving, giving something. So I think if if anybody, it would be the opposite effect. If anybody ends up in the district, they're going to be jumping for joy as opposed to angrily trying to freeze there. So.
And you've had people approach the office looking to talk about this already?
Oh, yes. Yeah. As soon as the law went into play. Yes. And and not just property owners, but just developers throughout the state. There, I mean, this is what's going on. They're going town to town, looking for locations and seeing where people stand. And our our line right now and speaking with with the town administrators simply, thank you, but you know, we're, we're looking at our options and we will be putting together a committee and and at the turn of the year.
The adjacent community definition, is that within so many miles of Forge Park? Or is it also the the bus line in new socket?
No, the definite, the definition actually comes out of the MBTA itself. They have designations for their communities that they they serve. And so we are an adjacent community, meaning that we are adjacent to the commuter rail station and we have MBTA service, whether you, whether you know it or not, we have MBTA service. There's a shuttle that goes on 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 our main corridor as well as we have the 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 ride that helps the senior center.
I did take the train then to Boston Forge Park for a year and a half. That was.
Yeah. So I mean, we we have a large population that does go to Forge Park or or elsewhere. So we're not arguing the fact that fact. It's just simply the intent, going back to Dennis's comment, the intent of the law was to, you know, support the commuter rail and create housing that's walkable and you can go into Boston without driving. And we simply don't have that ability. We, this will only just further that bottleneck right before Forge Park essentially, if that's the, you know, the area that we we focus on.
I have nothing to add. I appreciate the info.
I have one question.
I have a couple after you too.
I thought you said you were done.
Well, you, you're the one who ultimately tells me if I'm done tonight.
Rob, I'm here all night. It's okay.
Thanks, Jim. You know, I appreciate that. Thank you. I will keep you two. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask the reverse of what Phil asked. Is there anyone in town who owns land who would be interested in taking advantage of this? Any developers that could take advantage of this right now?
That could take advantage of it right now?
Who give a interest?
Oh, yeah, those, I'm, I'm sure there's tons of property owners. You know, we have, we have a couple of large property owners in town. I'm sure they would certainly want to take advantage of it as soon as possible.
Anyone in front of us right now?
Yes, very likely, very likely.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, just quick question. So if, if it's, if what the state wants, if it's allowed by right, and it's most likely going to be an overlay, do they have any say or have they mentioned anything regarding dimensional requirements? Or basically, the way I look at this is that, and I hope that the state doesn't take this approach, you know, you look at like a forty B development, which basically you don't even have to go by zoning rights. It's just state regulations. And, you know, if this isn't planned properly, I mean, it could be a serious problem. I mean, we don't have sewer in most areas of the town. Fifteen units on one acre on septic is just not going to work. It's just, so I guess the only question that I have is, you know, if we do properly vet this, get the correct dimensional requirements to basically say, look, you know, yeah, you're allowed fifteen units per one acre feasibly, you can really probably only do ten or five. You know, is the state going to come down on us and say we're not abiding by their regulations? Because this just does not make sense to me.
Yeah. So it does, they they've come out and said that it doesn't mean that you have to develop seven hundred and fifty units. It says that the the ordinance or the bylaw has to allow for that ability. So we have to, once it gets approved by town meeting, we have to submit that to the state for compliance. So you submit it to the very likely DHCD or or the AG's office and and they will review to confirm compliance with the law. There isn't anything in terms of like height limitation or limits to height limitations or anything like that. But, you know, I I think it, we would certainly, depending on how how many acres we look at, you know, this isn't very likely, you you wouldn't be able to limit to say twenty eight feet or something like that because you're ultimately not going to get that density if if you do the math.
I have one, one last question. Pick you up on what Rob said. Who's to pick up the cost for additional infrastructure for the town?
Right. So that's, I mean, that's the thing that all of our adjacent communities wrote when this law was going into place and it was in draft form. We, we, we explained that, you know, we don't have the infrastructure to support seven hundred and fifty new units. And not only that, the not just the infrastructure, but things like water withdrawal and and what Rob mentioned about sewer. You know, there, we're, we're not alone. There's a lot of other communities in that same boat. And so those are going to be limiting factors that, you know, developers are going to have to take into account when when looking at the properties. It doesn't state that we have to consider those when looking at our district.
Okay, go ahead. One last question?
Yeah, I think this is my last question. I think, Jim, you brought up a good point about how there's a lot of other towns that are in our in our situation here. Would it? This isn't even a question. This is more of a comment. I think this would make sense. I understand we have a town subcommittee that's being formed. But I do think that there needs to be significant, I mean, significant discussion with some other towns that are in the same situation as us. And I do think that a regional subcommittee of some sort would make complete sense because it's just, this is just, it's, this is just ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly bring that up at our our regional MAPC meeting. So we meet with the swap group. So it's like Medway and Franklin and 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 others, Holliston, Hobsonton, all those towns over there. And they're struggling with it as well. Franklin, oddly enough, I don't believe is is struggling. My understanding is they're, they're trying to claim that their downtown is already in compliance. So we could certainly have that discussion with other communities. Absolutely. I think that would be a separate track though. But but yeah, we could certainly certainly do that.
I agree. It's definitely a separate track. So you said, just so Franklin, Medway, you said Holliston as well are?
Yeah. So, yeah, and it's a sad kind of circle. So like Norfolk, it's Norfolk, Rantham. Yeah, Franklin, Medway, Hopkinton, Holliston, Milford, we all participate in that in a kind of a sub regional group out of MAPC that that meets every so often to discuss issues just like this.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm done. Thank you very much for all the information, Jim.
Of course.
Jim, is there any language about our our districts, like, for example, if you were going to put an apartment complex, does that apartment complex, you know, we've got a lot of different zones? Does this say anything about what type of zones this stuff can go in? Or is it across the board with overlay districts?
Well, it's completely up to us. We get to define, that's the one thing we get to do. We get to define where we're going to put that district. So it'll be entirely up to us to weigh the different options and determine when where, it doesn't have to be an overlay. It could be, we actually have a multifamily district already. It's where the Hartford Village is, it's already, it's already developed. But, you know, we already have ones now. We could just expand that if you wanted to. There's a couple of different options.
I'll have one last comment. So based on what I've heard tonight, the intent initially was to look at areas near MBTA stations within Boston, moving up to one twenty eight, maybe four ninety five, a real close proximity. They weren't favoring rural areas when they developed, did they?
Yeah, that wasn't the original intent. Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
All right, for keeping me up, Jim.
No worries at all. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
We had all the chance to read the February twenty third minutes that are in our package.
Yeah, there was page two, I think it was our vice chairman with the motion. I'm not mistaken, Mr. Vice Chairman, you were questioning the language of the of the Red Mill motion. Page two, Mr. Devine suggesting maybe we change that. Yes, that's true. Maybe we, how do I say this? Maybe in future we need to.
Read, read the motion, who made it, who said it?
Yeah, just because I think there's a lot of, I'm just pointing, yeah.
That's our new key to slightly easier.
I would like to. I know that's a hard thing to do, Tina, so that's trying to pick out our voices. But yeah, that's the only thing I saw.
Remind me if I forget, you know, if you get the call ahead. Motion to approve limits as amended.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Here at the minutes, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes in. Motion of adjournment?
Devote.
Seconds?
Second.
Need a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes or adjourned?
Did I, Bellingham and Bill?